All right, welcome everybody to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Committee of the whole meeting today, Monday, March 24th, 2025. I'm Tracy Ferratani stepping in for Lori Bodie, the deputy mayor, who is, I believe, online. Yeah, great. So we do have, hi, we do have a quorum then, that's excellent. Okay, so. Do I have to move the agenda or do you have to move it?
Ah, it would be nice. We did have an add to the agenda.
Okay, all right, so discuss it.
Uh, yeah, so we just wanted to give a download from the trip to Olympia to see the legislators last week. So Larry and I, maybe 10, 15 minutes, not too long at all.
Yeah, is it okay if I put you at the end there?
That would be fine to be at the end. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, with that, I'll, I'd like to hear a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
All right, so we moved and seconded. Any further changes? Okay, seeing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor of the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Right, anybody abstaining? Nope. Okay, thank you. All right, so, um, let's see. First order of business is the public comments. I'll read the statement really briefly. The committee is not accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might have purview or control over. However, the committee may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the deputy mayor or presiding officer may request the speaker suspend their comments. The council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute time limit. And with that, I don't have a list, but I do see Sarah, if you want to come on and give a talk.
Okay, my name, still, my name is Sarah Phillips. And I just wanted to share with you, this is, what you have in front of you is a draft of some of the things that we're doing. And we just wanted to make sure you were all aware of it because we were going to ask, of course, that some of it come out in the, in the newsletter, that we're, we have worked with solarizing Kenmore and the city of Lake Forest Park is partnering with Solarize Kenmore. Last year, when they did this, 22 households in Lake Forest Park had an assessment done. I don't know how many of them actually followed through. But, you know, that what Kenmore has done is vetted a set of contractors and they, then they can, they'll do an assessment. They feel confident about who these people are and that they're upstanding citizens and that were, the city of Lake Forest Park would, residents would be able to participate. And that's happening twice, once on April 21st and then later in May. We're also doing some work with celebrating Octavia Butler. As you all know, she's, she was a resident of Lake Forest Park. She died about 10 years ago. There's a new biography coming out and there are a number of people who are very interested in sort of raising the author and her, her books up. It's been 20 years since the Parable of the Sower, which, so, so we're doing that. We're just kind of, we gather, group together and they're doing all the work. It's fabulous. We're, I read on the wrong side, I was on the wrong side of the page. The Climate Hub is moving along. We are planning, so tentative, we're working with artists, which is always a treat. Two local artists who are designing a mural. And then we're going to project it up onto the wall and then the urban arts people are going to help with materials and paints. And we're going to have a community paint in of this wall. And if you've been over there, you've seen the prime primer, it's beautiful blue and really nice. And those, so the community be invited to participate in that. But I put the date down, but you know, if the artists don't come through or there's some snafu, this is a really a tentative date. But it's Earth Day, so we thought it was a good day. We're working with the tree committee and the parks committee and the garden tour on the Horizon View Arbor Day guided walk. So they're going to put up the, we have a, now we have a clay model of the bench that's going to come up. It's not me, it's a garden club, a garden tour, the, but it's going to be a piece of that. And then we're going to have a big picture and sort of what participates with that. We're going to do a program called Get, Let's Get Ready for Fire Season. It's on a Saturday morning. Maybe sort of a test to see if anybody wants to come on a Saturday morning to learn about fires. If it's smoky, I think we'll have a full house. We're going to have a pulmonologist talk about the impact of asthma and pulmonary issues with fire, with smoke. We're going to have somebody from Kevin from here, from NEMCO, talking about, whatever he talks about, like emergency stuff. And then we're going to have the fire department come in and talk about prevention. And and then there's a second workshop on solarizing Kenmore and Lake Forest Park and then the Octavia Butler. There are other things that are going on too, that we're working on, Lake Forest Park Garden Tour, the Farmer's Market Picnic in the Park. And our book club continues to be an amazing event. We've, so I'm plowing through one dystopic novel or nonfiction after another, but it's, it's been increasing in numbers and people are, excuse me, showing up. And it's, you know, it's sort of a drop-in book club on climate. But I didn't want you to be surprised by any of this. This, there's something that's going to go, go in the paper soon that will sort of illuminate any of this stuff. And if it's not sort of been anything that you want to do, you should talk quickly. Thank you. That was sort of snarky. We're moving ahead on this and, and I think it's going to be a great way to continue to raise the issue of climate. And of course, that there should be a climate manager. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sarah. All right, Matt, are there any other commenters? Okay, thank you so much. All right, so I'm going to close public comment now. Okay, so on our agenda next is a presentation regarding RIAA Water Resource Inventory Area 8, Chinook Conservation Plan and Possible Interlocal Agreement. So with that, I think we have somebody online. Oh, so Director Hoffman is going to be introducing them?
That's what that means. We do have a presentation as preparation. And so, as is the next item, preparation for future actions. So we thought we'd start from zero. Many of you are familiar with it already, I hope. And the purpose is just to do the background, less confusion later. And to not use acronyms, it's really hard for years. RIAA 8, RIAA 8, Water Resource Inventory Area Watershed, we're in number eight. And Jason Moby Hill Kuntz is on the screen any second now and has a presentation. We have, we're available for questions and answers right after. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you all hear me and see me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thanks, Director Hoffman, for that introduction. Really appreciate that. Really appreciate the invitation to come speak with you all this evening. Good evening to members of the council. Appreciate you having me. Really happy to talk about salmon recovery and all the great work that's happened through the watershed-based partnership that the city of Lake Forest Park is a part of. So I think if I just share my screen, I can share my presentation. So bear with me one moment. Is that coming through okay?
It is. Yeah, there you go.
We are seeing the presenter mode.
The presenter mode, so let me switch that.
Now we're full screen. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all. Appreciate that. So again, my name is Jason Moby Hill Kuntz. I'm the Salmon Recovery Manager for the Lake Washington Cedar-Samamish Watershed, which we affectionately refer to as RIAA8, as Director Hoffman noted, it's, it's quite an acronym. And it comes from, just so you're aware of this, it comes from when the state did water resource planning back in the late 90s. And they divided the state up into what they called Water Resource Inventory Areas. And then they numbered them 1 through 25 across the state. We happen to be number eight. And when salmon were listed under the Endangered Species Act in 1999, the geography of the watershed worked very well for salmon recovery as well. So salmon recovery adopted the same geographical boundaries as were used for watershed planning. So that's where that acronym comes from. So you'll hear RIAA8 or WIRA8 often, and that's, that's just what it refers to. So outline of my presentation tonight, the main goal here is to provide you with some more context about salmon recovery in the watershed, Lake Forest Park's participation in the interlocal agreement partnership that supports salmon recovery work. And we're renewing that partnership for another 10-year period this year. And so this presentation is intended to give you background and context to support your consideration of that renewed agreement. So I'll give you a little bit of history about salmon recovery, talk about the RIAA8 salmon recovery plan that we have. Talk about the interlocal agreement a bit and then talk somewhat about our funding and accomplishments and a bit of a look forward as we contemplate the next 10 years of salmon recovery and, and then leave plenty of time for you all to ask me questions and get into a little bit. So real quick, background on salmon in Puget Sound. In the late 1800s, the population of Chinook salmon in Puget Sound just plummeted. There was a lot of logging, a lot of impacts to our watersheds around Puget Sound that really impacted salmon habitat. And so their populations kind of precipitously started to fall. A lot of overfishing happened during that time as well. And so in the late 90s, the state decided that it was time to act and they adopted the State Salmon Recovery Act. That was quickly followed by the federal government coming in saying, okay, yeah, Chinook salmon are really in trouble. And they warrant being listed under the Endangered Species Act as a threatened species. That happened in 1999. At that time, the local governments in Puget Sound, at least in our area in central Puget Sound here, realized that this was a potential issue that could impact them because under the Endangered Species Act, local governments or others could be sued for a taking of an endangered species. And so recognizing that this was kind of a regional issue, they banded together under an interlocal agreement to say, let's tackle this and we'll work on it collectively as a, as a region. Since if each one of us did this alone, we probably wouldn't make much of a difference. And so that really galvanized the local governments at the time and they came together in 2000 under the first interlocal agreement to start planning for salmon recovery. And they developed a salmon recovery plan, the RIAA Chinook Salmon Conservation Plan in 2005. And we've been implementing that plan since. In 2007, the regional salmon recovery plan was developed and put together and our local RIAA8 plan is a chapter of that Puget Sound Regional Plan, which was adopted by the federal government in 2007. And is the official Endangered Species Act Recovery Plan for Chinook salmon in Puget Sound. And then our plan is on a 10-year time horizon. I think the local government partners realized they wanted an opportunity to kind of kick the tires, check in, see if the work was still going the way that they wanted to. So they set a 10-year time horizon on it. So in 2017, we did a plan update. And that's the, the plan that we're currently working under. We set another 10-year horizon, which ends actually this year, at the end of this year. So we'll be going through another plan update in the next year or so to update progress on implementation at that time. So kind of to ground you all in the context of how this work happens, the federal government through NOAA Fisheries holds kind of the Endangered Species Act and governs implementation of it at the federal level. They delegate some authority to the state through the Governor's Salmon Recovery Office and the Recreation and Conservation Office. And then that, the state divides the state up into salmon recovery regions, which you see in the middle of the screen here. We happen to be in the Puget Sound region. And that salmon recovery in that region is led by the state agency Puget Sound Partnership. And then each region is broken up into those watershed areas, the Rias that we talked about before. So you can see Puget Sound's region on the bottom right. And our watershed is highlighted in yellow. And so we work very closely with those other 14 watershed areas as a region to implement salmon recovery. And that's kind of how it's broken, broken down. So zooming in a little bit, here's our watershed and our geography. One thing you'll note is there are a lot of cities here. There's a lot of urban area. It is the most populated watershed in the entire state. So that brings with it a lot of challenge in terms of restoring habitat. But I like to think that it also brings a lot of opportunity because there are a lot of people here. And we have the opportunity and the obligation, I think, to educate and reach out to the public and to our elected officials to develop and nurture the kind of public and political will to do salmon recovery. And we have the most legislative districts, so we have a lot of influence on making sure salmon recovery is still something that is a priority for our, our area. And then when we talk about salmon recovery, we talk about salmon throughout their life cycle. And so we, we have adult salmon returning to the watershed every summer and fall. And they come back as adults and they come into the local rivers and streams and they spawn. But then we also have the juvenile fish when they emerge from the gravel and hatch from the eggs. And they're out migrating from those local streams through the lakes and the rivers and out through the Ballard locks and the ship canal there. And so we, we focus on the juvenile fish as well. And in fact, when we talk about recovery in our watershed, we're really mostly focused on the juvenile fish because that's what we have the most ability to affect is the habitat that they need. The returning adults are really only here for a couple, few months. And their job is just to reproduce and spawn in the rivers. So they have more ability to do that. It's really the juvenile fish that we need to create some space for and make sure that they're healthy on their way out. So I mentioned the plan. This is the cover of our watershed, our RIAA8 salmon recovery plan. And really it provides the conservation basis, the science that supports implementation of salmon recovery. It outlines a series of habitat goals, recovery, restoration and protection goals for the watershed at a 10-year basis and then on a 50-year basis. So some kind of near-term goals, but also some longer-term sort of vision type goals. And with those goals come a series of 20 different recovery strategies that really focus on how are we going to achieve those, those goals? And what's kind of directing the action and the activity? And that also results in a capital project list. So we have a whole list of projects broken up by stream or lake that identifies the opportunities that we have to do restoration and protection work throughout the watershed. And that really drives what projects get funded and implemented. And we recognize that we're not going to just restore our way to recovery. It recovery requires also being protective. And so we, although there is no land use authority within the RIAA8 partnership, we do provide a series of land use recommendations that we hope are helpful to the local government partners who are updating their regulatory codes and, and the ones that are responsible for kind of governing land use. Likewise, we realize that it's really important to continue to do outreach and education. So we have a lot of activities focused on nurturing that understanding and that love for salmon in the watershed. A lot of school-based education, a lot of just sort of general awareness raising, education and outreach work. And then finally, we recognize that the science is always changing. We do a lot of lessons learned through this work as we implement projects. And so we, we put a strong emphasis on monitoring and being able to adaptively management, manage our approach as we, as we implement the, the actions and the activities in the plan. And so the interlocal agreement really sets up the whole governance structure for how we are going to implement our work. And it's, it's made up of elected official representatives from all 28 of the local government partners under the interlocal agreement. Councilmember Ferratani is Lake Forest Parks representative. Councilmember Bodie has been a member and an alternate on the list. Councilmember Mark Phillips before was also a member. In fact, he was the vice chair for a while. So we've had a lot of strong Lake Forest Park representation at the Salmon Recovery Council for many years, which has been much appreciated. The interlocal agreement also creates a funding mechanism. So we receive federal and state funds and also local funds through the King County Flood Control District that are guided by the Salmon Recovery Council and funding recommendations are made to the funding agencies to support projects and programs that are going to benefit salmon the greatest in the watershed. We set an annual work plan and there's an annual budget that goes along with that work. And the interlocal agreement also provides the kind of basis for technical and regional coordination. So we bring, my, my staff team brings together the scientists, the technical folks from throughout the watershed and, and kind of focuses them on the key science issues that govern salmon recovery. Kind of working through what are the priorities? How are we building in new science, that sort of work? And then we also represent our, our watershed at the, the regional level and at the Puget Sound level. So there's a lot of that coordination that goes on. And we've had an ILA in place since 2000, 2001. We're currently just wrapping up the 2016 to 2025 ILA. So the one that you'll be considering will be from 2026 through 2035. So the work plan, just a kind of thumbnail sketch of what it includes. It includes the work that we do to coordinate the Salmon Recovery Council and tee up policy decisions for the council to grapple with. All the project coordination and implementation work that we do with all the local governments and nonprofit community organizations in the watershed to identify, develop and implement those key projects. It also involves managing annual grant rounds. We have roughly between $5 and $7 million a year that we have to allocate to projects. So a decent amount of money to support really good work on the ground. We're continuously doing monitoring and adaptive management largely through our Implementation Technical Committee, which involves representation from many of our local government partners and also different community groups, state and federal agencies and, and other interested folks. And then another kind of main job of the Salmon Recovery Council is to tell and kind of hold the salmon recovery story. And to, to coordinate a lot of the communications and do some of the legislative outreach that we've done every year. So in terms of funding, the interlocal agreement has a cost share structure that each of the local governments pays in to support the work that we do on your behalf. And it's, it's established that the cost share amount for each partner is established through the, an average of the percent population, the percent assessed value and the percent area of each jurisdiction. So it's sort of a rough proxy for impact to the watershed. And that's worked pretty well over time. In 2025, Lake Forest Park's cost share amount is $5,409. City of Seattle is our largest cost share partner, as you might imagine. I think their cost shares somewhere in the range of $130,000. So it's a quite a big difference depending on the size and kind of assessed value of, of the jurisdiction. Grant funding, as I mentioned, that we sort of kind of help coordinate and manage comes from several sources. One is the Cooperative Watershed Management Program, and that's, as I mentioned, provided through the King County Flood Control District. That's $4.2 million a year. And then we have two other major funding sources that are state funds. One is the Puget Sound Acquisition and Restoration Fund. That's about a one and a half million dollars and that's every two years, we get that amount. And then we get about 530,000 of Salmon Recovery Funding Board funds. And that's a mix of state and federal funding that comes to support that grant program. And so we manage the process to implement those grant dollars on the ground. So accomplishments, we've done a lot in the last 10 years. This is just a real kind of snapshot of the work. $38 million has been awarded to grants. So a lot of really good work on the ground. You can see a number of projects and working with a variety of project sponsors to get that work done, which has really been exciting and galvanizing. A lot of really exceptional local governments and community organizations in the watershed that have done, have a good track record of getting this work done on the ground. And kind of applying lessons learned to their work in integrating climate change and all of that kind of thing into the work that they're doing. So looking ahead, we have a big challenge to continue to do the habitat protection and restoration work that we've been doing. We are working on a progress report right now that's going to document how well we're achieving the goals that we set out for ourselves. And we have a big focus on the Lake Washington Ship Canal right now. The water temperature issue is a problem there. That's causing a migration barrier for salmon. So we're really trying to dig in to that issue, which is not going to be a simple one to, to solve. It's going to be pretty challenging. It's going to require a pretty significant engineering fix that could be really costly. So we're trying to identify solutions to deal with that. As part of that, that's kind of part of the overall effort to try to address these key survival issues or bottlenecks, as we call them. Predation on salmon is, is a big issue both by seals and sea lions at the locks on adults, but also by invasive predatory fish in the ship canal and in Lake Washington and Lake Samamish as well. They're eating a lot of juvenile salmon as they're out migrating. And so those predator populations of invasive fish are growing and growing and really can have a significant impact on the juvenile salmon population. As I mentioned, elevated water temperature. We're also realizing artificial light at night has some, some key impacts on salmon that relate to predation. And then also disease, which is exacerbated by the temperature issue. We also want to work to better integrate the salmon recovery work that we're doing with other efforts that are complementary and, and kind of the big one that we like to point out is stormwater management. There's a lot of connection and overlap between what we're trying to do for salmon habitat restoration and what we're trying to do to manage stormwater. And one of the main reasons we're really focused on stormwater is, is to support salmon. And so it makes sense to try to integrate those, those efforts in a better, more effective way. We also are working to support equity and inclusion in, in the work that we do. Trying to bring new community organizations that have not been part of salmon recovery into the work. And kind of recognizing that we have a variety of communities within the watershed. Not all of them have traditionally been involved. And we'd like to try to do more to bring some new community organizations, new communities into the, into the work that we do. And also some of the projects that we're, we're implementing as well. And then we want to continue to do really good monitoring work to make sure that we're tracking how we're doing and making any course corrections that need to happen based on new science and, and what we're learning through that work. So that's my last slide. This is the small staff team that supports the work that I mentioned. It's working on your behalf as part of the Salmon Recovery Partnership. And we're always available for any questions or information that you all may need, your staff may need. So I'll stop there and ask if there are questions and just thank you again for your time and for having me tonight. And to Lake Forest Park's work on the watershed and on salmon recovery to date.
All right, thank you so much. You're, Mr. Molvo Kuntz, you're such an awesome manager of this program because there are so many competing different kinds of interests within the watershed. And to just try to balance, get that right balance of the funding going to the different areas as well as the different groups is just a task in itself. So thanks again. So I'd like to open the council. Do you have any questions for our RIAA manager?
Thank you, Jason. This is Samara Riddle. I am curious, does the ILA money cover like all administrative costs around the grants and everything else? Or is there kind of like gap areas?
Yeah, good question. The, the ILA funding supports the administrative, basically it supports the program funding for myself and my staff team. Enabling us to sort of do the work of coordinating the Salmon Recovery Council, doing all the planning work, managing the grant programs as we're evaluating proposals and making the funding recommendations. It supports all of that work, doing the science, kind of bringing all the scientists together. It doesn't fund the capital work or kind of the program work, the outreach and education work necessarily. That's all funded through grants and such. But the ILA funds do support the, the basic program functions and administration.
Thank you. That's good to know. Then all that grant pass-through funds is really actually being passed through.
Hundred percent. Yep.
Hello, I'm wondering, are there any substantive changes to the ILA compared to the, the current ILA?
Yeah, great question. Largely, this ILA was intended to be a pretty simple update. We wanted to make a lot of clerical changes to kind of tighten up the language. Kind of tighten up the language, make it more concise. And there are three interlocal agreements across three watersheds in in King County. So King County, being the service provider where myself and my staff team sit. To the watershed, wanted those agreements to reflect similar language and kind of over time, they'd sort of. Gotten away from each other a little bit. So the county wanted to kind of make sure that there was common. Language within the agreement. So that we did some work to. Align the language in the agreements so that there wasn't a kind of difference across. The three different watershed interlocal agreements. So we did some of that work. We also wanted it to reflect current practice. There have been a couple of places, like, for example. There's a requirement to create and provide the annual budget. By, I think it was. September. And we adjusted that to reflect our current practice to get it. Get it done by October. And so we just did some quick, some changes like that. To adjust it. So there's nothing in there that's a significant change that I would absolutely highlight. It was a lot of just kind of truing it up, making sure it reflected current practice. Making sure that the language was consistent across the other agreements that the county had with other local governments and watersheds. And and then kind of making it more concise.
Good. Thanks. And thank you for your group's work. Yeah, this seems a worth like a worthwhile use of our our funds.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the question.
Thank you for the presentation. So over the last twenty five years, you had a slide there that was showing sort of population of endangered species with regard to salmon. What do you see as the trends over the last twenty five years and what do you see as trends going forward?
Yeah, that's a good question. Salmon are tough because. You know, we want to look year to year, like year over year to see trends and status, but the the way that their cycle is, they go out to the ocean and they spend. Between three and five years out there. So each generation. Can be is at least roughly four years. And so to get some good solid trends and understanding, you almost need like a decade worth of data to really be able to point at something. If not twenty years worth of data. So we're sort of just to the point where we're starting to. Understand that. What we've seen over time with the Chinook returns, basically in the last twenty years. Is that there's still, they kind of. Have gone down, but they've leveled off. A bit. So we've we've basically stopped the bleeding. I should I would say it's not. A success and a win necessarily because we're not seeing them rebound yet. But I think there is some some measure of success in just leveling, having them level off. Despite the fact that we're still losing habitat to development, we're still having stormwater impacts from toxins. A lot of these things that affect their survival are still happening. Yep, their populations are leveling off of, you know, in a good way. So my hope is that as we get some of these restoration projects in the ground. And they have time to mature to really start providing the benefits because you, you know, you do these projects, but they're just like construction sites where they're pretty bare for quite a while. And so it takes. You can imagine when you plant a tree, it takes a while for it to grow up and really provide the the benefit that you really want it to. So it takes time for these projects to really come online. And so. My hope is that as we've gotten more of these products in the ground over time, over the past, you know, fifteen, twenty years. We're really going to start seeing some some good. Numbers and some good benefit here. So I don't think it's going to change overnight. I think salmon recovery is a long term effort. We're going to be at this. You know, probably forever in some respects, but I'm hopeful that we're going to start seeing some better numbers as we continue to do this work. But one of the challenges I would say is just that. We can control, we can control in the in the watershed area, the freshwater portion of of their life cycle, but they go out into the ocean and. There's a lot that can happen to them out there. There's impacts from climate change, like with ocean acidification that affects their food. Makes it less plentiful. There's fishing impacts that happen out there. There's, you know, like the the blah, the warm blob that happened. Really reduce their populations. And so there's other impacts out there that we don't have control over, but. We want to make our watershed as as good a place for them as we can. So when they do come back, they can produce and. Create as many juveniles as possible to send out and hope that we get them back as adults.
Thank you. Councilman Brevoti, did you have any or Deputy Mayor Bodie, did you have any questions?
No, thank you, Jason. I completely agree with what you just said. It's very hard to see immediate results because of the life cycle of the fish. And also the length of time it takes to see things like habitat benefits. The bottleneck of the ship canal is very concerning between the marine mammals and the predators. So all I can say is I support this and keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
And thanks. And so I have a quick question. I know that you and your staff, Jason, have had a chance to tour our potential, well, our lakefront park. Just in the, which is in the middle of construction phase. And I'm wondering, given the state's budget. And the forecast that's being made currently, are there still possibilities for doing streamside rehabilitation and shoreline rehabilitation? Including stuff like dredging? Do you see basically funding for that kind, those kind of projects coming down the pipe in the next few years?
Yeah, that's a good question. I would say up till up until this year, we were starting to see some really good indications that the state was. Starting to invest a lot more resources in things like streamside work, what we call riparian. Area restoration, kind of planting the stream sides, creating larger buffers, things like that. Restoring lake shore is a is a high priority for right in the right plan. So when we were out to see that. Site with staff over the summer. It's really exciting to see that potential. I think there's good potential for some restoration there if the city is interested in having restoration be part of that project. We talked a little bit about what that could look like. There's some good design ideas out there for how you can create a natural shoreline that would support. Juvenile salmon. Dredging is probably not something that would be supported by salmon recovery dollars. But the shoreline restoration and planting or placing large wood on the shoreline, planting, you know, the right kinds of native plants. Creating beach areas that the juvenile fish like shallow water beach areas. So those kinds of restoration. Efforts certainly would would be part of what could be funded. And like I said, we have a pretty high priority on that, that type of work for our watershed. And I would think even if the state. Resources start to be a little bit more constrained. The local funding that we have through the King County Flood Control District actually provides the most funding for our grant work. And would probably be one of the better sources for. A project like that in the future. So I would, it's probably where I would direct. The city to focus and work with us on what that could look like. But I would say that it's still, I'm still encouraged by the state, you know, with the Climate Commitment Act being. Kind of kept in place. There are revenues that we were seeing trickle down to salmon recovery work. That relate to climate change improvements. That support some of that type of streamside work. And so as long as those revenues are still directed in that way. Salmon recovery could see a benefit from from state dollars as well.
All right, thanks a lot for the roadmap. Okay, anybody else have any other questions?
If there are no more questions, just two points. This was preparation. We'll bring back the ILA. I'll shrink down. We'll bring back the ILA. The update from the meeting last week was that some cities have. Approved or adopted. Most are in the process. We're looking to join that group. And we have window of opportunity. So the next step with this council will be the three touches with the new ILA. And then one added point, resident Dr. Jensen, Jeff Jensen. Resident of Lake Forest Park is now back on the recovery board in a different capacity. Council member for Tanya is our voting member. And I don't recall the group that he represents last week, but he's. He's he's returned to the board. So we're well represented at those meetings. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And we'll see at the next meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Okay, so moving on in our agenda, there's going to be a presentation of. Regarding the public benefit rating system, and I think Mark, you're going to introduce our speaker.
Remote today with us is David Greatham. So temporary planner in the Community Development Department. I've asked him to give a presentation and overview. Of the process and program in preparation for an actual application that we've had. At the city for some time. So before bringing that forward, we thought we would start with a general presentation. He's going to give that. Megan Kim with King County is also available at the end for any questions and responses, anything that you're. Curious about. Tonight is just the background. We're not asking for any decisions. That comes later with the Hudson requests and I'll leave it to. Megan to talk about the potential for other requests from this community we may see. David Green like to go ahead. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. Can you hear me okay? Great. My name is, as Mark said, David Greatham. I'm a temporary senior planner on Mark's team in community development and. I'm excited that we do have Megan Kim with us. She's our partner at King County and the lead at King County on reviewing open space applications. And so she's our. Process expert. So I'll give you a a sort of a light overview, but we have Megan here to really help us dig in on questions that I might not know the answer to. So that'll be. That'll be excellent. The reason we're before you tonight, as Mark mentioned, you have an open space application coming your way shortly. We'll be forwarding with a staff report and the whole packet. So this is a preview. That's the Hudson application. And this is sort of a table setting. This first touch is really a either a refresher if you already are familiar with the system. Or a introduction if you haven't dealt with the public benefit rating system before. So. This evening, we'll do that quick intro and we'll have Q and A and council member Goodman, I think, sent us a couple, excuse me, Goldman, sent us a couple preview questions. Thank you. We'll. Try to answer those. And then a quick sneak peek at the Hudson application, but not really any action on that tonight. So. All right. In our world of land use, like most other things we deal with, the Growth Management Act, the Shoreline Management Act. Well, the Open Space Taxation Act starts at the state level. I've provided a a, excuse me, I'll screen share. Just to show you the the references. Give me just a second here. All right. Oops, sorry about that. I'm going to stop sharing and grab the right one. Let me try that one more time, folks. And then. Okay, there's the reference for the Open Space Taxation Act. There there's an RCW and a Washington Administrative Code. But really where the rubber hits the road is at the King County code level. That's K C C twenty dot thirty six. That's where the county deals with open space applications. It also includes agriculture. And timber forestry applications as well. In our case, we'll be looking in at the future meeting at an open space application. So the. Process is really laid out and we'll provide a link when we get into the actual review, but there's a great document that King County. Has on the webpage called the King County Public Benefit Rating System. Resource information. So feel free to Google that ahead of time, but we'll provide a link going into it. But that's the document that really lays out the program and how. An applicant can get points for their application. Which lead to a tax reduction. So that so the system provides an incentive to preserve open space by providing a tax reduction. If the landowner gets approval. It's a point based system. And you can or an applicant can get up to a ninety percent tax reduction. Now, the flip side of that is the city will see less tax benefit from that property or those properties that are approved for it. So there, you know, there's a public benefit side. There's also an impact to taxes, tax benefit to the city. The the basic process is just the quick few steps to the process where it's the applicant applies to King County. King County distributes it to the local city if it's within an incorporated area like the one we're going to review in the future, Hudson. And then starts a review of the project, including a site visit, a resource evaluation. And a staff report. And you will be seeing a staff report for Hudson that actually goes into detail. About how that application. Meets or doesn't meet the rating system and and the assigned points it might get for, in their case, urban open space or watershed protection. Those are all examples of things that can give up to five points per item. And you have to have a minimum of five points. To even get into the system. You'll see when Hudson comes before you, they they will have more than five points. In their recommended review. So after the site visit and staff report, it then has to go to both city and county council. So this goes to one of the council members' questions regarding. Number one, is it a hearing exam review? Well, and Megan will correct me if I'm wrong in this, but the King County level. They defer the primary view to the hearing examiner, but the council still takes the final legislative action, maybe through a consent agenda after it's gone through the hearing examiner. At the city, it would be the county, the city council. So you'll be seeing that at a scheduled public hearing in an upcoming meeting. Now, the interesting thing is. The way the rules are laid out, the city and the county both have to. Act on the same application. Or say modified application. We can't be looking at different, different things. So if we want to amend it, for example, the Hudson application. Due to our priority to get the the. Comp plan done last year, we had to bump it a bit. So it's actually a year behind where we'd like to be. So we'll probably have to amend the staff report and Megan can let us know if this is possible or not. To update what the tax impact to the city would be. For example, if it is approved. But other than that, everything's going to be in the staff report that we already have from the county. And the county council also acts on the on that information. And if it's approved by both, what happens is the. Agreement is signed with the landowner. It is recorded with the county and then the tax rolls are updated. So. Just a quick preview of Hudson before we jump into our Q and A time. The Hudson is a. Is about an acre and a half property. It's located. At thirty twenty one Northeast eighty fifth street. And you don't need to memorize any of this tonight. You'll be seeing a real application coming your way. But it's it's three parcels and the applicant is proposing putting two of those in the rating system as open space. And a little slice of the third parcel where their house is. The state law requires that you have to exclude the area around the house, driveway, garage, garage, et cetera. But if there's some forested or open space land on your primary lot, you can include that too. So they want to include about one acre. Of the one point five in the public benefit rating system and get the tax reduction that goes with that. We'll talk about this more with the actual application, but if, for example. The total taxes are twelve thousand dollars, then the city might see a thousand of that for its percentage, just as an example. So that could be up to a thousand dollar hit. To the city's tax benefit. But the benefit, of course, is that those parcels are then put in. Open space under the system and will likely have a conservation easement that goes with them. Or may, if they do, that adds more points. So what we would do next, before we jump into our Q and A session here, is you'll you'll get a packet from staff with the Hudson proposal. A staff report and recommendation that goes through the whole rating and points assigned to the property. And we'll do the advertising for the public hearing in advance as we would any public hearing. And then the council will take action either way, and we'll provide a draft resolution with that packet. So all the all the information will be there. If you choose to approve, all the information will be there to to take action either at that meeting or a following meeting. So with that, that's the brief overview. I'm going to stop sharing here, but we have Megan Kim from King County and, as I said, Megan is our. Our subject expert here. So I hope we can get some, I know we'll get some good info from Megan and she'll correct anything I just told you probably as well that I might have misstated. So. With that, we're open to questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Redham, for a great presentation. I'm wondering if the council has any questions for him. Did you have all your questions answered, Councilman Goldman? Ms. Kim, did you want to make a statement?
Um, I I think that, um, thank you, David, for inviting me and thank you, council, for having me. I think that David did a very fine overview. Of the P B R S program. We've been working together for quite a few months now. So I think he presented the Hudson application very well.
All right, go ahead. Yes, so thank you for addressing my questions. One additional question. Is it a requirement of this process that the landowner open up their space to public access? Or is public benefit?
It is not a requirement. The name Public Benefit Rating System is that the public benefits from private landowners conserving and preserving natural resources. Although we do have public access categories, it is not a requirement for this program.
Thank you. Great. Deputy Mayor Bodie.
Yes, thank you very much. I have just a question that shows my ignorance. Why would you do the open space designation rather than just do a conservation easement? Is there, what, can you explain a little bit more what the, the benefit is and, and why you would go through this longer process rather than just impose a conservation easement? I, I perhaps just don't understand the benefits.
Yeah, that's a great question. You can actually do both. So the PBRS program is for landowners who potentially can't get someone to purchase a conservation easement on their property and/or they also have a conservation easement. We have plenty of properties that have farm preservation program involvement, trail easements. It's additional categories because those documents, those easements are recorded on title. And so they are also an incentive to get a conservation easement because they will earn more points, which will be higher savings. I don't believe that a conservation easement always leads to a differential in the value of the land. I think sometimes it can. But what the Public Benefit Rating System program does is it takes the land tax and then the portion of the property enrolling and it reduces that by a percentage. So if you get 50% and you have a five acre property, you will now be assessed and pay taxes at a 50% rate.
That's great because I wasn't familiar with this program, but I was more familiar with conservation easements. And that was my recollection is you get that much of a tax benefit from having a conservation easement. So that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Great question.
Councilor Riddle.
What, what, what's kind of the expected financial implications for the person to actually go through this process? Like, is there an application fee? Do they have to hire someone to do survey? Like, what, what is the impact in, in actually getting the ball rolling?
Great question. We have a one time $620 application fee that has already been paid by the landowners. You do not need to have, in general, any kind of survey work done. There may come a time if there is no documentation of a critical area, we may request more information if we don't feel comfortable making a call for some of the categories. But in general, there is, outside of that fee, there isn't much outlay of cash, I guess, to, to enroll.
Thank you. And follow up question, do you ever see folks in adjacent parcels kind of go in as a group?
Yeah.
Is that a, is that a challenge or is that just, it depends on each homeowner, how they want to handle it?
Also, great question. PBRS does take that into account. And we actually have a category called contiguous properties under separate ownership. And so what that means is you can get a neighborhood in together as long as they have all of the same categories. They can combine their open space and they can actually potentially increase their savings value because they'll be bringing more acreage in and also potentially building off of each other.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Good.
Yes, thank you for the information. Is there a minimum property size? Is there any minimums as far as what the square footage is to do this?
There is no minimum for PBRS. However, there are minimums for certain categories. So when we're, there's 20 different categories and a handful of bonus categories. And so when we are evaluating properties, we are looking at which categories will come up against those acreage minimums. And then oftentimes there are categories that don't have that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilor Lebo.
Thank you. This might be just my unfamiliarity with the program. So a homeowner applies and they're accepted. So they get a reduction in their property tax and this is considered a open space benefit to the public. Are there any limitations then placed on the property in terms of what the homeowner may do with that piece of property that's been designated as part of this program? And at some point can they revoke this and say, I no longer want to be part of the program? And what happens to the taxes that they didn't pay if, for example, they sell the property for development?
Great questions. So to kind of go through those a little bit. The process is, yes, the property is, there's an application, there's a site visit, there's a hearing with the hearing examiner. And they are signing an open space taxation agreement. That agreement is what goes on title. And this process takes about two years. So a 2025 applicant will see savings in 2027. There's ordinances that have to, as David mentioned earlier, there's ordinances that are created and then also tax rule corrections that happen. So it's a bit of a process to get in. But once you are in, the restrictions are really dependent on how your property qualifies. So if your property qualifies with a forest stewardship plan or a restoration plan and it's approved by a King County forester, speaking specifically for unincorporated properties and/or city properties that also have approved this plan, they would be allowed to, with proper permitting, of course, to fulfill the obligations in those plans. So they would be allowed to drive machinery, anything related to that far, the forest plan to harvest trees, to manage trees, to thin, all of that would be allowed and it would all be documented there. If a property does not have a plan, it is much more restrictive. We don't allow for putting trees for views. We don't allow for thin, thinning. It is a little bit more restrictive in how to, you have to, obviously in all scenarios, you have to manage for weeds. So all of the weeds need to be not necessarily eradicated, but controlled within a feasible percentage on the property. And let's see, anything else I wanted to say about?
And Megan, I might, Megan, I might throw in by weeds, you mean non-native invasive, right?
Yeah, non-native, yes. Yeah. So we're talking Himalayan, blackberry, holly, ivy, Scotch broom. Those are pretty much the four main characters I see often on sites. And if a property would be removed, so in the, let's say, this is also where, you know, the code comes in and it's in certain scenarios. So if your property is enrolled under 10 years, you, the landowner would need to pay the compensating taxes. And what that means is it's up to the last seven years in interest. And then there's a 20% penalty. If it's after 10 years, it's still up to the last seven years interest, but that 20% penalty becomes the, it's dependent on the situation. If the property is in compliance, then we waive that 20% penalty. If it's out of compliance, then that 20% penalty applies. And that's usually paid either at the time of sale or time of, in the, or 30 days, I believe, within removal.
So just to follow through, so it's possible after, did I understand 10 years to sell the property and reap a benefit?
Um, no, there is, there is a financial, you, you pay your compensations back. You pay back which it, in the last seven years. Well, I guess there might be some benefit there, but I would have to look at the math based on that 12% penalty that's applied. And generally we have a 5% attrition rate. Not a lot of people come out of the program. We just looked at how many people come out of PBRS and it's pretty low. 5% for landowners during purchase and then 5% are usually purchased by Lake King County for preservation in perpetuity. I think it also is interesting, Lake Forest Park already has about eight, eight parcels, eight people enrolled, more, more parcels. But eight current files, there's 18 acres already enrolled. The most recent application was in 2009.
And Megan, you've been, oh, I'm sorry. I don't want to interrupt there.
Go ahead.
Megan, you've indicated that there's some interest beyond the Hudson application, that the council's going to be reviewing shortly. There's additional interest?
Yes, there is additional interest. I actually have a phone call tomorrow at noon with a representative for a landowner who owns five parcels and we're going, we're going to be discussing PBRS. And it looks like three of the parcels seem to be a really great fit. And I need to learn a little bit more about the other two parcels. They're not adjacent to each other. These two properties are separate. And then I've also received quite a few phone calls over the years about interest. So there is, there is public interest in, in coming into PBRS in your city.
All right. Well, thank you so much for the presentation and for the answers to the questions. In fact, you preempted my question, which was, how has LFP been involved in this? And there we go. All right. Well, thank you so much. So the eight parcels that have already, do you know, do you have an approximate acreage of all of them aggregate?
They're eight, 18.
Oh, 18. Okay.
18. Yeah. So we have eight current files. So I misspoke. I could get you outside of this, you know, if you really wanted, I could send you the parcel numbers, like how many parcels. And then that totals approximately 18 acres.
That's, that's great to hear. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
So if there's no further questions, I think I'll turn it back over to Director Hoffman.
I just have one more comment and that's to thank Megan for phenomenal patience. I believe it was a year ago that we first spoke and there was no reason to not move forward at that time, other than absolutely swamped with mandatory things. This is voluntary, even though the benefit's clear. And I appreciate that we're now able to address this properly and move forward. And I'll be thinking the Hudson's when, at that appropriate time soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to assist.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, thank you. Okay. So I guess moving on in our agenda then, there's the legislative update that I believe council members Riddle and, and Goldman are going to be leading.
Yep. So last week, sorry, are we formal or informal at these? Informal, right? Samra and I last week went down to Olympia and we met with each of our three legislators. Senator Stanford and Representatives Kloba and Deuer. And they were good meetings. Also our lobbyist Shelley, there were two, there were Shelley Kloba and Shelley Helder, our lobbyist. Multiple Shellys, but she was there with us as well. I think the first thing I'll emphasize is there's a lot of value in meeting them face to face. You know, compared to having a phone call or writing an email or a Zoom call. Actually, having in the room with them, I think it lets you build a connection. So I think that's really good. We focused on our, on our legislative agenda, which as a council, we passed that late last year. We made some modifications on the fly in light of current budget constraints. But the, I think our top priority was the lakefront park. We were asking for, I think, $1 million in the capital budget for the lakefront park. And I think all three legislators told us variations on the same thing, which is it's a very tight budget season. We should not get our hopes up. They were supportive of the project in general, but we're pessimistic that it would be in the budget, just considering the state's massive shortfall. Did you want anything about the lakefront park?
I think we reiterated that this is a large construction project that's going to be over multiple years. So that we wanted to keep in mind that this will be coming back next session and that it would still be relevant and useful to us next session, just staying on the top of their mind later.
And then, did you want to talk about the roundabout?
Sure. So the roundabout, again, it was an ask for, for funding. Sort of, we reiterated what our ask would have, was originally when we put the legislative agenda together last year and how we've brought it down, that we're putting in our effort so that they know we're good partners. But we still have that gap. And so we were hopeful, but we'll see. I don't think it ended up in the transportation budgets.
Earlier today, both the House and Senate put their operating and transportation, they published their operating budgets and transportation budget proposals. And the roundabout is not in those. They have not published their capital budget yet, which was for the lakefront park. But as of now, it's a no on the roundabout.
But we did reiterate that, you know, we've had a lot of funders and, you know, we do need to move the project forward. That it's, it would be really difficult for the city if we were to step away from it at this time. And just gave them sort of a clear understanding that we're committed, we wanted to get done and we really, there isn't an unlimited time, you know, frame on this. Which led us to our request for state Route 104 complete streets and multimodal connections. Again, because these big transportation projects aren't happening, we weren't, you know, that excited about bringing this because we knew we were just going to get a no again. But we did hear that WashDOT is going to be maintaining their maintenance budget. So we pivoted and said, look, it's a mess right now. So let's step our ask back from asking for the $16 million complete streets and can we just get the maintenance done on this street? Can we get anything really? And, and, and just sort of emphasize that we would be a good, you know, we'd be partners and making sure that happened. But that would be our only in for funding is if it comes in as a maintenance from their maintenance and preservation fund.
And we, we floated the idea of a partnership where maybe like if WashDOT is handling the maintenance of the pavement, maybe then the city can take the lead on putting in more crosswalks, especially crosswalks near bus stops where people need to be able to cross the street. There's nothing explicit in the, in the budget proposals on 104. I don't know how that exactly applies to WashDOT's general maintenance fund. But I think it's probably a Shelley question. And then the last thing, I'm pivoting away from asking for specific projects, just talking about local funding and how we're hamstrung by the 1% property tax increase. They were supportive and actually both the House and Senate have put legislation forward. It's moving through committees that would raise the limit. I think there's slight differences between the versions, but both would be tied to inflation. I think the Senate's version would be inflation plus population growth, whereas the House version would be inflation up to 3%. So it does seem that there, the legislature, legislature is supportive of opening it up for more flexibility for local cities.
Well, there, there was a, oh, sorry. There's a, there was a letter in our email about signing on to something in regards to that. How does, how do those two things compare? Or do we know yet?
I'm sorry, I vaguely recall seeing the email. I haven't, didn't have a chance to fully read it. It was today, right?
Yes. So I think we should take a look at that because it had some very specific asks in there.
Or? It's always good to sign on as a council member if it's something you feel strongly about often. You know, Tom or I or Tracy, we, or Phil, we sometimes sign on when there are things like that. But it's a really good point, Paula, and we should take a look at that. And usually the process to sign on is really fast and simple.
Actually, and related, something else that we heard is that Um, actually, and related, um, something else that we heard is that it's likely there's going to be a lot of pushback about the raising it from one to 3% as a limit. And so this is likely to be a highly controversial issue in Olympia. And so I suspect they're looking for support from local jurisdictions to help them push it forward.
And additionally, they were at one time floating just, uh, lifting the cap at the state level and not the county and city. And there was a lot of pushback on that. So I think that they've come to an understanding, it has to be universal. But they could always change their mind. Um, we do have till, uh, Tuesday, tomorrow, if, if we're going to sign on to that letter individually.
It's a really good point. Thank you for reminding the whole council about that. Um, so, uh, does anybody else have any other questions for our legislative update? Uh, Deputy Mayor Bodie?
No, uh, excellent. And I am so pleased that council members Goldman and Riddle went to Olympia and did their, uh, visits and face-to-face communications. I just really want to thank you two and say that's, that was awesome.
And I will say that face-to-face was really important, but being in the middle of session, it probably wasn't as effective as it could have been. I think we need to continue to have connections with our, uh, legislators through the summer and fall, um, before they go into session, just to have more time with them, where they're more free.
That's a very good point. Thanks for the reminder. It doesn't have to be during a particular day set aside for, uh, local officials. I was just noting the irony that they're holding their first ledge town, town hall right now. So there you are. But, uh, there'll be many of opportunities, of course, coming. All right. Are there any other questions? Okay. It looks like we've come to the end of our, uh, agenda. So, um, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.